Yeah, so. Got it. Happy morning, everyone. So, welcome to Toastmasters Club. Yeah, happy morning. So, we follow some rules so that we a smooth flow of the meeting tonight. So, first, let's all be on time. Our friends from SCBD Toastmasters Club will be sharing the agenda for the night so that we we will know which one who's coming first or how many minutes are we are we gonna have for each speech. Then, for our visiting Toastmasters and guests, please identify yourself properly with fully your nickname or your real name. But let's avoid calling ourselves like the Asian boy earlier, so that we we can call you properly as well. So, and also, please turn on camera so that we can see your beautiful and handsome faces. And also helps us to know your facial reactions or facial expressions all throughout the speech. And fourth is, please keep your microphone on mute. So mute your microphone whenever you are not speaking, but please do not forget to unmute your microphone if it's your turn to speak. And lastly, be fully present and have fun during the meeting. So, without further ado, I will give now the control to our president, Toastmaster Garda.
Alright, thank you so much, Toastmaster Melanie. And now, with the sound of this utensils, I hereby open the meeting by hearing this once. So, that's the sound. And please, everyone, unmute yourselves and repeat after me. Happy morning!
Happy morning!
Yay, that's the spirit. Happy morning, everyone. So, once again, on behalf of SCBD Toastmasters, I would like to extend a warm welcome for those of you who are spending your wondrous Friday evening to attend our regular meeting in SCBD Toastmasters. My name is Garda, currently serving as the president of SCBD Toastmasters Club. And we are delighted to welcome you, everyone, because today will be another special day for us to learn and improve ourselves altogether. So, for those of you who are being first timer in any Toastmasters meeting, allow me to share a little bit information regarding what Toastmasters International, as well as what SCBD Toastmasters is. Because I also noticed that some of you are being first time in a Toastmasters. So, in the meantime, sit back, relax, and welcome to SCBD Toastmasters. So, Toastmasters International is almost a century where it has been a nonprofit educational organization that features every person of public speaking skills and also leadership. So, if you are being a member in Toastmasters International, you will be connected to thousands of members across hundreds of countries, and also you'll get along with thousands of clubs around the world. And talking about being a privilege, so what should I acquire if I enroll myself for the membership into Toastmasters International? So, because this is an organization that teaches everyone about public speaking and leadership, you will get access to our educational program, so it's called Pathways. Imagine that you are currently studying, or you were studying, in a university or college. There is this curriculum, and there are elevens, eleven curriculums in Toastmasters International. And let's say you want to excel your public speaking, but at the same time, you want to enhance or strengthen your leadership skills, probably you will need it in your workplace, and you are about to take the dynamic leadership because you will find it suitable to your path or your journey as an individual. And maybe you can find it, find more information about it later. And for more information, please contact our club officers regarding what pathways are. And about SCBD Toastmasters, we are an affiliation of Toastmasters International under District 87, Division I and Area I Tree. It has been more than sixteen years for SCBD Toastmasters. Usually, prior to pandemic, we always had the physical meeting around SCBD area in South Jakarta. But during this pandemic, we are shifting our physical meeting into this online meeting through Zoom. And for the following year, SCBD Toastmasters would like to uphold the vision of providing a place where everyone can become a better you. And how to achieve that? By empowering every individual to strive for progress. With the values of being structured, collaborative, bold, and determined, we are determined to provide this platform for everyone. So, how to join us? Simply, you are doing it right now. Every Friday, we are meeting from seven to nine PM Jakarta time. And for more information regarding our meeting or our activities, you can visit our Instagram and don't forget to follow at SCBD dot Toastmasters, or you can send us email or click the link provided in our Instagram bio. Click the chat or VP membership, and you will be directed to link your message to our VP of Membership so that can address your questions or queries properly. And before we start the meeting, I would like to continue to one of the most important sessions in Toastmasters, that will be the induction ceremony for our newer member. So, please welcome our newest member in SCBD Toastmasters, the baby Toastmaster Tika. Hi, Toastmaster Tika!
Hello, Toastmasters Garda.
Hi, how are you doing? I'll put you on the spotlight first. Hi, how are you doing, Toastmaster Tika?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good, thank you so much. I'm a bit tired, but I'll be cheered up because of you guys. So, Toastmaster Tika, because you are our newest member, and as part of our tradition, please repeat after me. I, in the presence of my fellow members of the SCBD Toastmasters Club, make this firm obligation
I, in the presence of my fellow members of the SCBD Toastmasters Club, make this firm obligation
to attend meetings regularly and prepare completely for each assignment.
To attend meetings regularly and prepare completely for each assignment.
To apply myself to the projects outlined in the Toastmasters Educational Program.
To apply myself to the project outlined in the Toastmasters Educational Program.
To actively participate in club activities.
To actively participate in club activities.
To provide a constructive evaluation and feedback in a positive manner.
To provide a constructive evaluation and feedback in a positive manner.
To build an open, supportive, and empowering relationship with fellow members.
To build an open, supportive, and empowering relationship with fellow members.
And to encourage prospective members for joining the club, enhancing their skills, experiencing the utmost benefits, and striving for progress.
And to encourage prospective members for joining the club, enhancing their skills, experiencing the utmost benefits, and striving for progress.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Tika. And now, I'd like to ask the participation form the existing members, and I've modified a little bit, and I would need to ask all existing members to simply answer this one simple question. For the existing members, please unmute yourself and answer the following question. Will you solemnly swear to provide our newest members a safe and supportive place and help them strive for progress and become a better individual?
Yes.
I do.
You will.
Yes, we will.
Awesome. And yes, I will too. Thank you so much for all members. And once again, let's give a round of applause to Toastmaster Tika and SCBD Toastmasters. Thank you, Toastmasters.
Thank you, everyone.
And we look forward to hearing your icebreaker today. So, with that being said, for all prospective members out there, should you want to become a member in SCBD Toastmasters, just like what Toastmaster Tika did, feel free to contact our officer or click the link as provided in our bio, and you will be attracted to our VP of Membership and we'll get to assist you from that. And that is all from me. And now, I will give the control to our Toastmasters of the meeting, Toastmaster Fika, over to you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Garda. Hi, everyone. Happy morning!
Happy morning!
Happy morning!
Who is excited today? Please give your thumbs up. Even though you are so tired today, like Toastmaster Garda said, today's so tiring, so many meetings also, but yes, seven PM is always time that we are waiting, right? Okay, wait, let me share my screen. Oh, sorry. It's another. Okay. Is it visible right now? Okay, so, welcome everyone to our today's meeting. So, today's meeting is, our topic is about respect, is more than just being a polite. I really love this topic, actually. It's really as a mom, as a who are employees, I really love this topic. Okay, and for today's word of the day is a gallantry. So, gallantry is courageous behavior, especially in a battle, polite attention or respect given by men to women. It's, I really love it. As a woman, we really love when we're being respected, right? And also to give respect also. Okay, and for today, I will be here as your Toastmaster of the meeting, and I will help you for the journey of this meeting from different until the end of this meeting. And I would like to introduce first our evaluation team. Okay, Toastmaster Alvin, could you please introduce about your team? Your screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Fika. My fellow Toastmaster and guests, my name is Alvin, and I'll be the general evaluator for tonight's meeting. I will evaluate everything that takes place throughout the meeting. During the meeting, I will take notes on everything that happens and is supposed to happen. I will evaluate the meeting flow and how duties are performed. At the end of the meeting, I will share my feedback and report for our learning. Tonight, I won't be alone. I have a team that hugely supports me, that solves the gallantry for me. First, the speech evaluators. Toastmaster Yusuf, Toastmaster Pipit, Toastmaster Yanda, and I'm sorry, Toastmaster Yusuf, Toastmaster Yanda, and Toastmaster Aisha. Then, we have a evaluator for Tabletopic Master. She is Toastmaster Dentia. And the evaluator for evaluation, we call evaluator square. He is Toastmaster Ariyo. We evaluate Toastmaster Yusuf. Then, we listen to the prepared speech, Tabletopic Master, and evaluation very carefully and provide feedback to the speakers. So, please give them a round of applause. And then, we have four role takers. The first is a timer. Timer will be taken by Toastmaster Garda. I'm sorry, the first is grammarian will be taken by Toastmaster Garda. What is grammarian? Let's hear it from Toastmaster Garda. Toastmaster Garda, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Alvin. So, happy morning, everyone. Back with me again. So, today, I will be serving as the grammarian. What does the grammarian actually do? So, throughout this meeting, I will take note on the grammatical usage from everyone, particularly from all the speakers. And at the end of this meeting, I will provide the feedback and my evaluation so that everyone can learn from this feedback about our grammatical usage. I will also take note about the usage of the beautiful phrases from everyone so that we all can be inspired from our speakers today. So, that is all from me. I'll give the control back to our GE, Toastmaster Alvin.
Thank you for the explanation, Toastmaster Garda. And next, we move on on the second, which is, which is the ballot counter. What is ballot counter? Let's hear explanation from Toastmaster Rocky. Toastmaster Rocky, the screen is yours.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. G. Hello, my fellow Toastmasters. Happy morning. I'm Rocky. I will be your ballot counter. What is ballot counter is? Ballot counter is a person that will collect your vote for prepared speaker, tabletop speakers, and also evaluator speakers. So, don't forget to use your right to vote. And let's see who will be the, who will be the, who will be the, on the fame, on the Hall of Fame. So, thank you so much. Back to you, our GE.
Thank you, Toastmaster Rocky, for the explanation, and we will see the Hall of Fame from Toastmaster Rocky later. And then, next, we get a word counter. What is this? Will be explained by Toastmaster Tommy. Toastmaster Tommy, the screen is yours.
Good morning, my fellow Toastmasters and guests. My name is Tommy, and tonight, I will be the AW OD Counter for tonight. So, my responsibility as the AW OD Counter is to note words and sounds that are used as a pause filler by anyone who speaks today. So, during the meeting, I will listen to obvious words, including and, well, but, so. And, you know, I will also listen to filler sounds, including ah, um, and er. And I will also note when a speaker repeats a word for a phrase such as I, or like this means, this means. Another thing that I note is the word of the day. Don't forget to mention it, which is a gallantry. Please use it as many as you can during your speech. And at the end of meeting, I will report a number of times that a speaker used these expressions. Back to you, GE.
Thank you, Toastmaster Tommy, for explaining your role. Now, the last one, but not least, our timer. What is timer? Let's hear it from Toastmaster Melanie. Toastmaster Melanie, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Alvin. Happy morning again, everyone. I am Melanie, and I am the timer. As the timer, I will take note of the time, and I will help our speaker and, yeah, speakers for the night to know or to be alerted with their speech time. So, we will be, we will be having four different kinds of speeches today. The first one is the icebreaker speech. The icebreaker speech is good for four to six minutes. So, I will be changing my background to green if you, if the speaker, Toast and Toastmaster Uyun already reached four minutes. And after five minutes, I will be a yellow, yellow background. And after, am I correct? Four to six, and after six minutes, I will be showing the so please, at this time, you have only thirty seconds to wrap up your speech. Then, most other speech, which will be delivered by Toastmaster Leala later, the time limit is, the time duration is five to seven minutes. So, I will show green background for five minutes, yellow background for six minutes, and red background for seven minutes. And the next, the third kind of speech that we will be hearing today are the will be coming from the Tabletopic Session. So, a Tabletopic Speech duration is good for one to two minutes. So, I will be showing in for one minute, one minute and thirty seconds for it at thirty seconds, and red for two minutes. Then, the evaluation speech will, you have the time duration of two minutes to two, two, three, two to three minutes. So, green, green background for two minutes, two minutes and thirty seconds for yellow background. Yeah, yellow background, two minutes and thirty seconds, and for three minutes. So, one way to show our gallantry is to respect everyone's time. So, I hope that you'll be in my so that you will be alerted with the time. So, back to you, Toastmaster Alvin.
Thank you, Toastmaster Melanie, and thanks all for evaluation team for explaining your role. And we are ready to help you to show your gallantry for this Toastmaster meeting. Okay, that's all from evaluation team. Back to you, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Fika.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Alvin. So many word of the day today that is already out there for the gallantry. Okay, so we want to hear more, more from all of you. Okay, for the next, sorry. We want to hear for, so this is the agenda for today. We will have three session after this. We have prepared speech. So, each of the speaker will have time from five to seven minutes. And it's only for members. So, for guests, you cannot participate on this. But for the second session, you guys can participate. So, all of you can participate on this second session. We call it as a Tabletopic Speech. And the third one is the speech evaluation. Okay, so it's also from the member. Okay, and let's go for the prepared speech session. So, the first speaker is Toastmaster Tika, and the title is to tame the unicorn. And for Toastmaster Yanda, you, I want you to, I want you to introduce Toastmaster Tika first. The screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Fika. Tonight, I'm, hi, and happy morning, everyone. My name is Toastmaster Yanda, and tonight, I will be evaluating Toastmaster Tika. And she's going to deliver her very first speech on a very first session. And the purpose of this project is for her to introduce herself to the club, and also for her to learn about the basic structure of a public speech. And fortunately, she's going to talk about something that I'm familiar during my childhood. It's the unicorn. And she's going to talk about how to tame the unicorn. And I'm sure all of you are as curious as I am. So, is she going to deliver something that I've been thinking? Let's find out. So, we will, let's welcome Toastmaster Tika to tame the unicorn, to tame the unicorn, Toastmaster Tika. The screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Yanda. Hello, everyone. Happy morning. Bonjour à tous, my fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests. In case you're wondering why I start my speech with French words, it's because my colleague greets me in French every day. And you know what? He's also the one who invited me to this club. Yep, you are correct. It's Toastmaster Ariyo. Anyway, my name is Tika Dianti, and I'm a venture capitalist by profession. Have you ever heard about venture capital? In case you didn't know, venture capital is an investor for startups like Grab, Bukalapak, Gojek, and Tokopedia. Do you know what they have in common? They started as a small business and grew really fast until they become what we call unicorns. Startup that have value more than one billion dollar. These companies can grow really fast because venture capital backed their business by providing money for them to expand. Confused? That's normal. But if you happen to watch Korean drama startup, I do what Hanji Pyeong does. Exact for the glamorous part, meeting with founders, giving mentorship to startups, and launching accelerator programs are some of my daily activities. And you know what? A good startup is difficult to invest in. Because if they have a good product and attract market attention, all venture capital are lining up to invest in that company. So, they become selective, and we, as a venture capitalists, have to deliver gallantry to tame them. Just like my speech title today, I want to tame these unicorns or potential unicorns. Prior to joining a venture capital firm, I founded a startup, which I thought would go to the moon. Unfortunately, it failed. In fact, I'm happy about it, because otherwise, I wouldn't learn and be who I am today. I learned from the experience, a startup relies on a combination of capable founders, great products, and market readiness. If a startup has this, it's highly possible that VC may want to invest in those companies. As a venture capitalist, I should raise money so that I can use to invest in startup. I'm hoping to be able to raise money up to one hundred billion dollar per year. So, I need to talk to potential investors and convince them. I should be able to engage and share the vision of the fund. Hence, I have to hone my public speaking skills and interpersonal communication. Aside from that, I also want to develop the startup communities by engaging with founders and entrepreneurs. Therefore, I need to exercise my leadership skills through programs in Toastmasters. So, these are the stories of mine. I hope you enjoy it. But I also want to know you more through your next speech. Should you have any interest in building startups? Let's have a talk. Because maybe you are the founder of the next unicorn that I need to tame. Back to you, Tom.
Woo, it's very insightful. Everyone, please unmute yourself and
Congrats!
So, you are the pretty Hanji Pyeong, right? Information I'm coming from startup. Let's talk later after this. I cannot talk. Okay, so for the second speaker, we would like to invite Toastmaster Aisha to introduce Toastmaster Uyun for the second speaker, and Toastmaster Uyun will bring speech about the X of Village. Wow, so interesting. Okay, Toastmaster Aisha, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Fika. Happy morning, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to Toastmaster Uyun. She will be delivering her level one project one in innovative planning pathway. And the purpose of her speech is to introduce herself to the club and learn the basic structure of the speech. Actually, this is her, not her first speech, but this is her first project in this innovative planning. And the title of her speech is It Takes a Village. Are you curious about it? So, let's listen to Toastmaster Uyun. It Takes a Village, It Takes a Village, Toastmaster Uyun.
Is my screen visible?
Yes.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Please check it out.
So, whenever I explain to him, for example, I came to him and then I explained, okay, so I think I found this A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And then he will just think of it, and then he will say, oh, Uyun, actually, you should have explained to me like this. This, this, I could have you better.
That was me eighty-five weeks ago, nervous and shaking while delivering my first ever speech in Toastmasters. Today, I am still nervous, though. I joined the club after I got comments from my boss that my explanation is not well structured and difficult to understand. Then, I decided to get a therapy to myself joining Toastmasters. And today, I would love to revisit how Toastmasters as a community has helped me to grow as a learner. After I always have this difficulty to think in sequence. My mind is like an Ikea. I often get lost in but thankfully, I made a small upgrade. During my monthly improvement session, my boss acknowledged, "Uyun, you did well in this particular report." I was very ecstatic. And for that progress, to whom I should put the credits? My thank is to all of you, fellow Toastmasters and esteemed guests. You have provided me a safe environment to make mistake. Every single small gesture of kindness matters a lot to me. Your presence, listening to my speech, your unintimidating eyes, your evaluation and constructive feedback, and even the progress that you made for yourself, that I am very proud of you all. By listening to your speech, I learned a lot, how to structure, make story How to structure, make storyline and emphasize messages. I really wanna praise you all for all of your good work and gallantry. Because when I praise you, it's like an affirmation to myself. My boss once said that our brain does not recognize the subject. When we compliment others. For example, when I said to you. Your speech is well structured. Then my brain will digest it as my speech is well structured. And hearing that fact, I was in awe. Realizing my evaluation is put at the heart of Toastmasters. It is because either receiving or giving feedback is the same language of betterment. And after all, we are a part of community that we have our own goal. But we reciprocally improve each other. Toastmasters has made me try new things, even something that I was afraid before. For example, Toastmasters made me try to fully. Falling in love with public speaking. To sum up, I am very thankful to each of you. Who has made this safe environment for everyone to grow. Indeed, it takes a village to rise, to raise a child, say an African proverb. It takes an entire community of different people to interact with one learner to grow. And we have a long way to go. And I am looking forward to your support. Yoroshiku negeishimasu. Please be nice to us because your presence and patience are always a present for us. Thank you, back to you, Miss, Mrs. Tom.
Okay, wow, thank you Toastmaster Uyun, everyone, please unmute yourself and give a big applause to Toastmaster. Couldn't agree more with you Toastmaster Uyun, this Toastmaster meeting is really shaped us, right? Yeah, okay, so for the next speaker, I would like to invite Toastmaster Yusuf. To introduce for our next speaker, Toastmaster Layala. Okay, Toastmaster Yusuf, your screen is yours.
Hey, happy morning, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster and guests. Tonight, Toastmaster Layala will do his level two project three task. Which is introduction to Toastmaster mentoring, which is for him to clearly define how Toastmasters and visions mentoring. So he will deliver a speech where the purpose of this speech is for him to share some aspect. Of a previous experience as a protege. So his speech will be five to seven minutes long. So without further ado, Toastmaster Layala, united, united, Toastmaster Layala.
There's a reason why God gave us two ears, two eyes and one mouth, one mouth. So we can watch and listen twice as much as we talk. Listening costs you nothing. Have you ever heard about that quotation? Well, that quotation derives from Sir Alex Ferguson. He regarded as one of the most brilliant and most successful football manager in the world. His gallantry, the pick that he is, he was a great mentor for his protege. In which his players to win more many trophies back then. So what is the correlation between that thing? And we are here united at SBD Toastmasters. We learn and we communicate towards one another as a mentor and as a protege. To become a better leader and a better communicator. So long story short, I couldn't be the person of who I am today, right now, standing in front of you. Should I did not have mentor. It was Yan Madeline Jialaxana of Maranata Toastmasters Club, of my first club. Who introduced me of Toastmasters. Actually, at that time, it was not compulsory to assign a mentor for a new member. But she was unfazed, she committed advance and with her experience. No wonder she was already became a DTM or distinguished Toastmasters. One of the three at the previous club that I joined. Her positive attitude, her gallantry infectious. So it really pushed me to become a better communicator. Even though at that time, actually, the club was shrinking. Because of, you know, the attendance was dwindling. And only we started thirty members, then twenty-five then afterwards only eight. Who attend the meeting regularly. But her passion, especially within the Toastmasters events. DTM Yaney showed me that you can. And she act really like a mentor. Because she didn't correct me when I made mistakes on my speech. But rather on setting up my goals for the longer term. That is why when it was my first time initiated. The charter of Telkomsel University Club and Bangmaniri Club in Bandung. Even though the club are now no longer exist. But she appointed me to be the test speaker. So it was my very first time experience to speak in a bigger audiences. And not just only that, she also challenged me to contest. And be the chair of the merger of the contest between those two clubs in Bandung. Even though I made mistakes, she always lift me up and gave me the courage that I can do it. And last but not least, she also encouraged me to be the club president of Maranata Toastmasters at that time. And at that time, within six months, I could achieve the competent communicator and competent leader. Because I could have much time to do it back then. So fellow Toastmasters and guests, the mentor is crucial. When you are having the good relationship with, with the mentees and the proteges. Because I am so grateful that she always supported me. And now she's still active as the member of Toastmasters. Even though that she's so busy. It's just like Cristiano Ronaldo grateful that he had Sir Alex Ferguson as his mentor. So for you, the new rejoined Toastmasters, what is your goal? Back to the Toastmasters of the meeting.
Woo, please unmute yourself and give a big applause to our gallery today to bring all travelers here. You see how many. Milan snack time will be the winner race time, wow, okay. Okay, but I really agree with you, Toastmaster Layala. If Toastmaster Andika here, I would like to say thank you also, become my mentor. You are my Sir, Sir Alex Ferguson for me. Okay, and also now I think that all the three speakers already bring their speech. So Toastmaster Melanie already asked. Emma at the timeline, okay, and now Toastmaster. Uh, Rocky to give a polling link for us, okay? While waiting, Toastmaster Rocky, we are going to have a photo session first. Is Toastmaster Andika here?
Toastmaster Andika is not here and I will leave the photo session for tonight.
Okay, so Toastmaster Galvin will lead the photo session, okay?
Okay, so everyone, as this is the one of the most awaited session of the night, which is photo session. So please unmask yourself so you can show us your true color to the whole world, okay? I will give you five seconds, five, four, three, two, one, close the door, okay? So the first page, do not type anything, please, okay? Do not type anything, the first play, the first page, first post, three, two, one. Nice, okay, let me just copy this first. Okay, wait a bit, wait a bit, wait a bit. Sorry, this first timing. Okay, now, uh, second page, three, two, one. Okay, thank you, back to you Toastmaster Fika.
Thank you Toastmaster Galvin, Toastmaster Alvin, I really love when you're using your sentences like that. Okay, so for the next session, we will have our double topic. Session, we will have Toastmaster Dewey to lead this, uh, session, okay? Toastmaster Dewey, your screen is, the screen is yours.
Uh, sorry, let me introduce her project first.
Master, yeah, yes.
Okay, so my fellow Toastmaster and guests. Toastmaster Dewey here as the table topic master is doing her project on active listening. So I'll be evaluating her in this project. I will not pay attention on the topics itself, but rather on her response. And her ability to listen to what others say, so let's just proceed with the session. Toastmaster Dewey, over to you.
Thank you Toastmaster Dantia, am I audible and visible?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, you are. Okay, happy morning, everyone, I'm Dewey, I'm serving as table topic master for tonight. It is a, an impromptu speech where you can deliver a one until two minute speech. Well, since tonight, we have. A theme with something related with. Sorry, something related with respect, now I want to share my screen. So here, it's, I have to admit, it is hard to look for the, the most suitable topic. But yeah, let's try, let's try to use the word of the day, it's gallantry. A light and kind behavior towards women, especially when in public. The quality of being brave when something is difficult, yeah, at least you try to apply it, it's a noun. Okay, may I have. Toastmaster Fika, could you please help me to list down any possible speakers for this session? Because I cannot see your faces here.
Okay, so I just need to choose, right?
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Okay, so the first will be, uh, Toastmaster Agung. Are you there, Toastmaster Agung?
Yeah, I'm here, one shot, I got the first one. Alright, yeah.
Lot of tries now.
Okay, Toastmaster Agung, have you decided one, two, ten?
Okay, uh, since the, I was quite happy, let's choose number six.
Number six. Can you, can you see my screen? Okay, it's one of some etiquettes in business, be more acceptable of getting things late. This is, I, I try to help you to give a guidance. So you, perhaps you want to structure the, your speech by using this formula. Are you ready, Toastmaster Agung?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, the screen is yours.
Okay, good, happy morning, Toastmaster and guests, alright. Uh, actually. Because I used to work with European people, European, European boss. I tend to be very strict when it comes to, uh, timing and also the deadline. Uh, back in the year, when, when I work in Bali. I always be, I, I, I did always push by the boss that I have. I need to be very, uh, stick to that line. If there is something late, even five minutes, I will, the boss will be mad at me. So that's why this culture is growing so much in me. And then when I came back to my hometown and then spend my time with my, uh, family. I got really frustrated because, yeah, the culture in my family is always laid back. And then, okay, think that everything is easy lah, easy lah, no need to be hurry, no need to be rush. But then I really frustrated and I always get angry with them, why are you like this? Please, please be quick, be quick, be quick, because it's already late, something like that. But then I realized that I, I got a culture shock when I'm back in, in, in. At home and I, then I realized that I have to show my gallantry. That I have to understand the, the, the culture difference when I am at home. And when I'm back to the work, I will be switching myself into the working culture. Yeah, thank you so much, I, thank you, I think it's enough, thank you, Toastmaster Dewey, back to you.
Thank you for sharing, Toastmaster Agung, yeah, I, I also have that kind of laid, laid back tradition. Especially when during, uh, working from home setting. It's hard to really adjust to go back to rush in again. Okay, Toastmaster Fika. Are you ready with the next speakers?
Yeah, sure, uh, so the next will be, uh, there is a message in, uh, I think there is a gap. Andika, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, okay. You are the next.
Hey, please, Toastmaster Andika.
I like number ten.
Okay, number ten.
I think there is not Toastmaster Andika.
Yes, I am.
Okay, please, Toastmaster Andika. Thirty seconds to prepare you. Wear long sleeve batik shirts are regarded as formal wear. The screen is yours.
Thank you, DTM. Well, actually, I had experience on this one. Not my personal experience, but actually the executive that I helped him during the OJK fit and proper test. On the first meeting with OJK, we asked him to.
You're muted, Toastmaster Andika.
Sorry about that, okay. So this is actually a personal experience, not mine, but the executive that I helped. He was a foreigner and he was trying to be a director in our company. And he had to attend the OJK fit and proper test. Um, before the meeting, we told him to wear a batik long sleeve, long sleeve batik shirt. But he didn't listen to us because he was. But he didn't listen to us because he wasn't comfortable. And he said that if I'm not comfortable, then how can I nail this test? But what happened really is, the OJK personals, they look at him very differently because he was Am I on mute again?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay then, well, I think, uh, you can give the slot to, uh, to others because I think my device is, uh, not really working. So thank you for the opportunity though.
Okay, yes, before reaching the punchline, I do really want to listen to the whole story. But thank you for participating, Toastmaster Andika. Uh, Toastmaster Fika, can we have the next speaker?
So the next speaker, let me invite from the guest, so guest Anastasia, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Okay, um, I would like to choose, um, number four, I guess. Okay.
You are muted, Toastmaster Dewey.
Hey, thank you. Wait for your host to invite you to drink or eat.
Okay.
You can just, uh, tell stories about it, if any. The screen is yours.
Yeah, okay, uh, thank you, uh, Dewey. So, uh, I have, uh, an experience about, uh, that I have to go to, um, to go to a meet, to go to, uh, on a meeting with, uh, my colleagues on the office. Uh, we ha- we are invited by, uh, by a partner, uh, our pa- uh, our office partner, we are talking about, um, we are talking about, um, our next, uh, partnership, uh, with the, with the, uh, with the clients. So, uh, in term of that, uh, uh, the partner invited us, uh, and have to, uh, then uh, invite us into a lunch, uh, into a lunch, uh, meeting. So after that, uh, I forgot. Okay, uh, so after that, uh, lunch, on the lunch meeting, uh, we talk about, uh, our next, uh, partnership and our, uh, next project. Um, but then, uh, actually, I have, I don't, uh, I have not my breakfast yet, uh, so I came in, on, in a hungry condition. So, uh, but, um, before, uh, the host, uh, asked me to, uh, to, uh, to, to, to have the lunch, um, okay, uh, to have the lunch, I am, uh, I, I'm, uh, I, I wait and ask, uh, I, I asked them to, uh, can I, can I just, uh, order, uh, food, uh, uh, order food or order, uh, uh, drink? They say that, uh, they say that, uh, it's okay and they also, uh, they also say that, uh, is it okay because, uh, we're actually, uh, not really formal here, uh, and not really formal, so, and after that, uh, we are, uh, so, and after that, uh, uh, we're actually, um, put, uh, we're actually, uh, the formal situation not really have to, um, I'm sorry, I guess I'm so nervous that I couldn't continue the speech.
Uh, no worries. Thank you for sharing and thank you for participating. I do really appreciate your bravery and I really want to listen to your full speech. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, thank you, guest Tessa.
Okay, so the next, I would like to invite Toastmaster Wira.
Hello.
Hello, Toastmaster Wira.
I'm gonna go with numero cinco. Number five.
Alright, here it is. Avoid wearing revealing clothing such as sleeveless shirts.
Hmm, I would like to go, uh. In fact, to be honest, when it comes to wearing clothing, I prefer, I'm more of, I'm more of a guy who prefers to wear, it doesn't matter what you wear, as long as it's still acceptable, uh. Like, I'm, I'm the type of guy who likes to wear short sleeve shirts like this. And every time I go to work, I prefer to wear jeans. I, I'm not the type of guy who likes to wear the formal trousers, you know, like the, the stuff that you were using, uh, wearing a tux. Uh, I like to wear tux, but I like to wear the bottoms, you know? I don't really like that much. I prefer when I'm wearing a tuxedo, I'm wearing a jeans, like a blue jeans or a black jeans. However, to me personally, as long as I go to a formal place, I'm not gonna dress, act like a bum, I'm not gonna dress like this, you know? Wearing a short and shirt like this, I'm not gonna go to a formal place and wear like, wear the stuff that I wear at home, that's just ludicrous. However, as long as the place is smart casual and all that, I will adjust it and, yeah, I honestly, I'm more of a smart casual guy, if you will. So, yeah, that's the stuff that I prefer to wear rather than the fully formal clothing. So, yeah, for the WOD, gallantry. That's all from me, back to you, TTM.
Thank you for sharing, Toastmaster Wira. I guess people will also struggle to manage their style. They perhaps forgot to dress up right, especially in business settings. Thank you for sharing, Toastmaster Wira. Next, we have
Like to invite guest Sabrina. Are you there, guest Sabrina?
Yes, hello.
Hello, guest Sabrina.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You can choose one, two, three, seven, eight, or nine.
Hmm, I'll choose nine.
Okay, you are Toastmaster Galvin's friend, right?
Yeah.
Cool. Here it is. Avoid pointing with an index finger, index finger. The screen is yours.
Okay, uh, happy
Sorry, you're muted.
Oh, sorry for that. Yeah, happy morning, everyone. So, okay, avoid pointing with your index finger. I used to, I, okay, I, I came from a family background that is quite traditional and, uh, and my parents taught me to not point on people, like physically point on people whenever, uh, whenever, uh, I'm, I'm talking to talk, whenever I'm on a discussion with my parents about, uh, a person in front of us. Why? Because they taught me that it is very impolite. However, uh, during, uh, those days, I couldn't really understand why I shouldn't, I shouldn't point, uh, fingers to the person that I'm trying to describe when I'm actually, uh, when I'm, I'm actually trying to picture out, uh, or, or to, just to be specific with my parents on who am I talking about? So, um, so, uh, if, uh, even until today, uh, to me, I find that, uh, it's not a, a strict no to not point on, point your index fingers on someone, but it's more like whether it is uh, obviously done or not. So, um, yeah, I think I have no idea on what to say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing and thank you for participating, Sabrina. Yeah, we can use either our thumb or the palm of our hands to pointing out something. Yeah, I, I can agree on that. That perhaps it's just the common, uh, courtesy, we can say. Next, we have
Okay, so next, I would like to invite Toastmaster Kaya.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, you are audible.
Alright.
You can choose one, two, three, seven, or eight. Don't forget to use our word of the day, gallantry.
I am always look like the guy in number seven, number seven, please.
Okay, here it is. Address each person using their first name.
Before I start, I would like to request for the first thirty seconds.
Sure. The screen is yours.
A little kid passed by my house today. And out of nowhere, by being watched, the other people around my house area. Kaya! And out with that, I feels like, who on earth is that? Calling me by my name? I don't even know you. I am new in this neighborhood. And the only place that I ever be is to the most. So that I go to there, what do you want? I ask him. You don't know me? I'm your friend. I'm the one that you see in the most back then. And I feel like, oh shit, I forgot your name. So ladies and gentlemen, do you think that remembering name is important? And by name, I mean the way you call them. They might call me as the Asian boy. Then you might call me as the black, uh, whiteboard guy. Because some of you guys might know me, the one that always using the whiteboard. You might know me with the guy with had ni- nice handwriting. You can call me anything, as long that you don't call me yours. I'm not belong to anyone, guys. I'm not belong to anyone. So ladies and gentlemen, I would say it is not nice to address people with only their name. Because why? With names, perceptions change everything. So ladies and gentlemen, who have you called today with the weirdest name? Back to Table Topic Master, over to you.
Oh, thank you for sharing, I got goosebumps. Are you the modern William Shakespeare? So deep, and it's, I don't know, I find it's quite similar. Thank you for sharing. It's quite meaningful. Okay, next.
Yeah, okay, I would like to invite guest, um, Arfan Fikri. Are you there? Guest Arfan Fikri. One, two, three, okay, let's change. How about guest Ananda Fitra Behar, are you there?
Hello, Ananda.
Okay, teams, we have to choose another.
Yes.
Okay, how about Gessi Git, are you there?
Come on, Gessi Git.
Hello, hi.
Okay, finally, you have a gallantry. Okay.
Please choose either one, two, three, or eight. Don't forget to use our word of the day, gallantry.
Okay, uh, maybe eight?
Eight, the infinity number. Attempt to force a decision.
Okay, um.
The screen is yours.
Yeah, so first of all, I'm really sorry for my late joining, uh. I'm not quite focused for today. I just left, uh, I just finished my meeting, so. Um, if you don't mind, can you share it again, what's the words?
Here it is.
Okay, attempt to force a decision and this is, uh, something, um, related to my activity, maybe, right?
Yeah, you can tell your stories. Can be about it or something related to it.
Okay, um, in my, in my view, uh, in my opinion, uh, attempt to force a decision is actually is not proper enough, right? So this is because, uh, basically, uh, we need to be quite open with others' thought. Uh, not every time we kind of, uh, always right. Even though this is our activity, or even though we are superior in our role, but still, in my view, we need to keep still open and not attempt to force a decision. Whenever a decision is actually, uh, decide, uh, with, uh, something enforcement, uh, sometimes it will have an impact with that, that, uh, we don't know later on. And usually that will be a negative impact. So, in my view, as much as possible, uh, for us is to go, you know, bring the issue into a discussion and then explore what's the background of the issue itself and identify whatever, uh, you know, from each side, whatever needs to be done, so this issue can be solved as a team. So that's, I think, what I mean with, uh, in term of not forcing something with, uh, yeah, not forcing a decision.
Thank you for sharing, Gessi Git, yeah, I can agree on that. I do really like your quote about we might be wrong and we have to do things that is our part.
Yep.
And leave everything that's not our part, right? Cool. Thank you for participating. Okay, we can go to the next.
Next, I would like to invite Toastmaster Rati, are you there, Toastmaster Rati?
Alright, I'm here.
Saraki?
Rati.
Sarati? Okay, sorry.
Sorry for that.
Saraki.
Uh, it's Toastmaster Rati, where is Toastmaster Rati?
Hi, hello.
Hello, Toastmaster Rati. You can either choose one, two, or three.
Hmm, two.
Okay, here it is. Don't forget to use our word of the day, gallantry.
Okay, okay, I'll try. Uh, happy morning.
Okay, one until two minutes. The screen is yours.
Okay, happy morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunities, uh, Tom. Uh, I would like to share my experience, uh, where, uh, uh, related to the screen, uh, using related to the screen, uh using left hand or using our right hand. Uh personally, I think using our left hand is not uh wrong, but it just uh it just a kind of a culture that we developed in our country, Indonesia, but uh generally uh generally uh when we use our left hand, it is closer to our heart, so uh people would um would uh first would uh would re- would receive the uh the meaning, uh other meaning, like it is the same like we we use when we use our right hand because uh it is a different culture uh when uh when it comes to different peoples. That's all. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you for sharing and participating, Toastmaster Rati here. I guess we have to be more flexible to adjust in every kind of settings, right? Even though we are used to use um right hand or left or whatever it is, but try to adjust shows respect. Right? Okay, I think we have one more speaker. This is our last speaker, Toastmaster speaker.
For the last speaker, I would like to invite Toastmaster Soni. Toastmaster Soni, are you there?
Hello, Toastmaster Soni.
Okay, maybe he's in the other meeting. I would like a sorry chance, Toastmaster Dwi.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I would like invite Toastmaster Nia.
Hello, Toastmaster Nia.
I'm sorry, but I cannot turn on my camera.
Okay, one or three, Toastmaster Nia.
Number one.
Cool. Here it is.
Respect elders is expected.
The screen is yours, Toastmaster Nia.
Okay. Respect towards elders is ex- expected. Yeah, we need to respect everyone. Not just regarding to their ages, maybe their personality also and then uh another thing like the stranger, but the elder is expected. Why? Because they are more they are here, they are pre- they're presents more uh than us, then they they like I think we should respect the the elders because we we should show the attitude, we should show uh our our respectful to them in our every kind of activity. It shows that that we are mannerly good and just showing your respect to the older one, that means you are respecting yourself too because when you respect the older, I think someday or someday we're getting older and we want to uh our kids that respect us, like listening to us or just being kind and not to talk like too harsh on them. Sh- uh choose the right kind things and yes, we need to respect everyone. I think that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Toastmaster Nia, and thank you for participating. Yes, I couldn't agree more on that. Basically, we have to respect, be kind to people basically because they are human beings, right? Okay, that's all from me from tonight's table topic session. I do really enjoy the session and I do hope you enjoy it too. Thanks for all the speakers and Toastmaster Fika for helping. Back to you, Toastmaster Fika, for timer's report.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Dwi. So interesting what the topics, yeah, so many lessons that we can get. Okay, before we continue, I would like to invite Toastmaster Melanie to give the report. Okay, Toastmaster Melanie is already uh given her report and also we are waiting for the polling link, so who will know who is the best. Okay, so after this, we will have a evaluation session. Okay, wait, let me share. Sorry. Okay, so for the evaluation session, uh we will have uh Toastmaster Yusuf, Toastmaster Yanda, Toastmaster Aisha, Toastmaster Ario and also Toastmaster Dantia. And I would like to invite Toastmaster Alfin to uh give the uh opening. Okay, Master Alfin, the screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Fika. Now it's time for evaluation session. The first evaluation for the third speech will be delivered by Toastmaster Yusuf. But because this is Toastmaster Yusuf's first evaluation, he will be introduced introduced by Toastmaster Ario, who will be here, his evaluator. Okay, Toastmaster Ario, the screen is yours.
Thank you so much, General Evaluators. Hello, Toastmasters, ladies and gentlemen. Today, Toastmaster Yusuf will deliver his first evaluation speech towards Toastmaster Layala's speech. The purpose of this uh project is for the member to develop skills for delivering and receiving it back and for the member to deliver constructive feedback on another member's presentations. Without further ado, this give all applause to Toastmaster Yusuf. Screen is yours.
Glory, glory, Man United! Glory, glory, Man United! Ladies and gentlemen, hello, Toastmaster and guests. Few moments ago, I just run to my room uh to get my jersey, but I cannot find it, so I cannot put it on because this is my wife's jersey. But anyway, what an amazing uh speech by Toastmaster Layala today. I really love his speech, not because I was an uh I'm an uh Manchester United fan, but because of the speech itself. So, let me get my note. So maybe if I try to break down his speech into three things, I would also like to link it into a a a football match, football team. There's a defender for the backline with goalie, there's a midfielder and also the striker, right? So first, about the midfielder. So what is midfielder? Uh sorry, first is about defender or the goalie. So what is a defender goalie? It's the message. So the message that is delivered by Toastmaster Layala is super clear. We know how, what is mentoring, we know how mentoring useful for him. We understand his experience with his previous mentors. We also understand how, what are the quality of his mentors that help him to become what he is today. So it's very, very clear, very, very awesome. So good defending, no goal is going to be um taken, so you will not lose. The second is the midfielder. Midfielder, we usually talk about the techniques, how to deliver the balls from behind to the front. So just like the speech from Toastmaster Layala. So we're talking about the techniques, the structures. So what I really like about the speech from Toastmaster Layala is that she he he uses a very uh clean structure from the opening, the the content, also the closure. And what I really, really like is the opening is very eye-catching and very engaging and make people like whenever the uh when Toastmaster Layala start to talk, you can see the background, the Manchester United shirt and everything. I think that's a very, very good job. And I see Toastmaster Layala, I think you can do even good job because when you do that kind of great opening, you are using uh um the the a theme. It will be good if you kind of like milking that theme maybe in several places because in your speech, I only see o- only notice about the uh football thing, only the first part, which is the quote by Ferguson. And there um some one other part in the middle or towards the end. So maybe you can milk it because it's already something that already catch and engage um the audience. Um I also like how you use um techniques like um 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 other techniques as well. And the last one is the striker. Striker is about delivery. Striker is about how you execute. And I really, really like your execution as well, your standing up. Um you're uh very composed. Uh however, I also noticed that you might uh want to improve in terms of eye contact because I see that you're looking uh not directly to the audience, but this is something that I'm also uh learning. But anyway, overall, it's a very good speech. I really like um everything from the back, middle, and the end. Thank you very much. Um back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you, Toastmaster Yusuf, for the evaluation reports. Wow. It's looks like uh many football fans uh on this Toastmaster meetings. Okay, we go on to the next uh evaluation will be held by Toastmaster Yanda. Toastmaster Yanda, the screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Alfin. Toastmaster Fika, first firstly, I want to congratulate you for giving your very first speech and you did it very well. You are so excellent at so many part of your speech. I can see that you managed to trigger audiences emotion by smiling from the beginning and it shows your comfort level. I can see that you don't look so tense. You deliver it so relaxed during your speech and you managed to choose the right pattern which can raise the audience curiosity. How to tame a uniform? Because firstly, the audiences will think about a uniform in a fairy tale and how you tame it. And you simply manage to make the audiences understand about who you are and why you are here in Toastmasters Club. And the other the other side, the other part of the speech is you managed to create an eye contact. You can maintain to look at the camera to create the connection with the audiences. That strong points that you have as a rookie tonight. That's very awesome and keep up the good job, Toastmaster Fika. But the the other thing that maybe you need to work on is, I can say it's more something like technical. It's relate with your camera position. Maybe you can step a little back, a a li- a little bit uh backward from your position so you can create a space and then you can utilize the space for your hand gesture. You can use hand gesture to emphasize whatever you any part of your speech that you want to address or you want the audience to grab their full attention to you. And lastly, uh something that I want to convey that you can challenge yourself, start from now, uh try to not to memorize the speech like I did. I did uh memorize the speech. Try not, try to remember only the main points. And then you can use your creativity every time you speak by using different sentences. Uh and then you you will get used to it. Uh I think uh that's all from me and I'm looking forward to hear more about the venture capitalist world from you on your next speech. Good luck, Toastmaster Fika.
Thank you, Toastmaster Yanda.
Thank you, Toastmaster Yanda, for the report for Toastmaster Fika. Now we go on to the next uh evaluation report. We'll be helped by Toastmaster Aisha will be evaluating Toastmaster Uyun. Toastmaster Aisha, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Alfin. Firstly, I would like to talk to ask Toastmaster Fika. Toastmaster Fika, what do you like about Toastmaster Uyun's speech?
Oh, uh I forgot, uh Toastmaster Uyun is basically talking about uh Toastmaster itself. I couldn't agree more because I really love how Toastmaster it le- is really shaping ourselves, right? I love how you have a structure here.
Thank you, Toastmaster Fika, for your opinion. I do really agree with Toastmaster Fika. Dear ladies and gentlemen, the most impressive thing about Toastmaster Uyun's speech is about her gallantry. Her gallantry, the the way she opened and she really fully opened with her full vulnerability by showing us the fir- very first video of her very first speech in Toastmaster. And this is really impressive. Not only it makes us feel that Toastmaster Uyun who speak really well also experienced the very first time speech. But Toastmaster Uyun also shows that the this gesture is in line with the content, with her content that show us that Toastmaster is the safe face, the safe place to show the imperfection. So congratulations, Toastmaster Uyun, for creating the very impressive speech. And then the second one, dear ladies and gentlemen, I noticed that Toastmaster Uyun, when she expressed her gratitude, did you notice that she also opened her palm of her hands and then show it to you? And also sometimes when she expressed her love or gratitude, she also makes this symbol. I fall in love with Toastmaster. And did you also notice that her eyes was really glassy when she really deliver the gratitude? And those gestures, the facial expressions, and also the body language also sh- also shaping the message that Toastmaster Uyun's deliver. Not only the message, but also the fe- the feeling that she wants to deliver. It was a great speech and also we can learn a lot from her gesture, body language, and also the facial expressions. And in every amazing speech, there is space for improvements. And here is the space for improvement for Toastmaster Uyun. Toastmaster Uyun, I noticed that you use the hand gesture. But sometimes when you use the hand gestures, we couldn't see the full hand gestures. So sometimes it's hidden right here. So sometimes it's really um yeah, sometimes it makes the the speech not really elevating your message. So I would like to suggest to to move your hands around this frame. Alright, that's uh that's all from me for my evaluations. Congratulations, Toastmaster Uyun, for delivering the impressive speech. Thank you so much. Back to you, G E.
Thank you, Toastmaster Aisha, for uh delivering the evaluation report to Toastmaster Uyun. Now we go to the fourth evaluation for the Table Topic Master will uh will be helped by Toastmaster Tia will be evaluating Toastmaster. For Toastmaster Tia, the screen is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Alfin. And congratulations, Toastmaster Dwi, for another project accomplished. It was, I think, easy to evaluate Toastmaster Dwi because she implemented all the three skills that important in active listening. I can follow easily and I can see that she is paying uh attend attend paying attention to the speakers attentively because she was smiling sometimes and then she was also nodding sometimes and she like repeating what were the speaker said. What I like the most about what uh what Toastmaster Dwi's speech was first, she did this mirroring technique. Like when uh she speaks to or conclude the speech from Toastmaster Wira, she replied of what Toastmaster Wira said. I think it's about choosing the right outfit, right? And it shows that she listened attentively. The next one is Tafalidi. She did um with Toastmasters, I think it's going to be Toastmaster Sigid, no. She did um with Tosmasters, I think Sunto be Tosmaster Sigid, no. And uh yeah, Tosmaster Sigid and Tosmaster Rati, she reconfirming her understanding towards what speaker said. The third one is empathize. Like the first one, when Tosmaster Algun said about her his experience, she also said uh at the end of the speech that she agreed and it can relate with Tosmaster Algun's experience. So overall, it was a great uh uh active listening skills. Now, how to elevate your active listening skills even more? First is to maybe pay attention to non-verbal cues. Or maybe some verbal cues also because giving attentive listening not only about the speech, but like when Tosmaster Kayum cracking a joke in the beginning, maybe you want to respond to that as as well. It shows that you are also listening to other part other than speech that you need to focus on. Or maybe the cues that Gessi get sent when he saw the screen and maybe he could not really understand the the message. You may also want to like asking him, um, did you get the message or do you want me to elaborate more or something like that? And maybe to some non-verbal cues as well. So in conclusion, you have done great in using the three skills, mirroring, validating, empa- emphasizing, and giving a non-verbal signal like nodding and smiling. And maybe you want to also im- uh engage fully by maintaining your eye contact and respond to indirect cues from the speaker. So I guess that's all from my side. I give the control back to GE.
Wow, very cool presentation from Tosmaster Tia. Tosmaster Tia, how do you do that? It's very cool. Okay, now uh last but not least, uh Tosmaster Ariyo will evaluation Tosmaster Yusuf that evaluating Tosmaster Layala. Tosmaster Layala is MU fan. Tosmaster uh Yusuf also MU fan. Now, we are, this miss, miss Tosmaster Ariyo is also MU fan. We will see. Okay, Tosmaster Ariyo, the screen is yours.
Well done, Yusuf. Well done, Yala. I appreciate your gallantry to bring forward Manchester United to this stage tonight. My fellow Tosmasters, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate Tosmaster Yusuf's speech towards Tosmaster Yala. It was a very well observed speech. And since I will be evaluating Tosmaster Yusuf, I also observed Tosmaster's speech. And I highlighted four impressions from his speech. I highlight it with an acronym, Y and WA. But don't worry, I'm a Liverpool Liverpool fan, but this is not, you'll ne- never walk alone. Why? The first one is, the first impression, why Yusuf the observer? I'm amazed how Tosmaster Yusuf can observe Tosmaster Yala's speech until the smallest part. She, he scrutinized the speech and not done everything. That's a very good. The second one is, and not consistent. Why? Because at first, you showed the attribute of Manchester United, but at and following that you say that, okay, um this is not about because I'm a United fans, but it is about the the speech itself. So what's the point of showing the attributes of Manchester United? If you want to bring values of Manchester United in the in the speech, that's okay, but when you show it and you say that, okay, my speech is not about Manchester because I'm a Manchester United, so I don't see the consistency there. The third one is W, way to structure the evaluation. It is awesome that you use the analogy defender, midfielder, and striker. However, to make it more concise and easily understandable, I said, I suggest that in evaluation speech, we use the hamburger method. It means like, good, bad, bad, good. Don't put the good one and the bad one uh like, like a stack. Because if you put the first uh part is the good one and then you followed with the bad one, bad one goes back to the good one. In the end, you bring the optimism towards the next part of the speech. So it will encourage the speaker to have more energy, to have more gallantry in the future. And last but not the least is A, the ambience. Well, I really love the ambience of your speech. You stood up and then you sang, you show attributes. You brought energy to the speech to the stage night. I appreciate that. So in nutshell, Y and WA, the first one is Yusuf the observer. Second one is not consistent. The third one is way to construct the evaluation. And last is the ambience. Last but not least, you'll never walk alone. Back to you, Milano.
Thank you, Tosmaster Ariyo, for the evaluation report. I really enjoyed this session because there are so many football term used. So we found out uh Tosmaster Ariyo is Liverpoolian. Okay, uh that's for speech evaluators. Now, uh let you see for the timer report. Uh Tosmaster Melanie, is everyone eligible to be uh voted?
No, Mister Alfin, so I'll post it. Um only Tosmaster Yanda, Tosmaster Denya, and Tosmaster Ariyo are eligible to be voted. Uh yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tosmaster Melanie. Now we move on for the next report. Uh it is grammarian report will be delivered by Tosmaster Darla. Tosmaster Garla, the screen is yours.
Alright, thank you, um, Mr. GE. So it's uh wait a moment. Okay. So back with me again and now as what I previously mentioned at the beginning of this session, I would give a report regarding our session for today. And now, we have another teacher in the room that will be me, so because I will deliver my English class time to you kids. Don't worry, don't judge me, uh Tosmaster Melanie. Okay, first things first, let's break ice. It's quite common in any Tosmasters meeting when someone say, "Let's call upon Tosmaster Melanie, for example, please." Well, it's not completely correct. Because call on or upon something means to ask formally uh for someone to do something. So, it will happen better if that someone say, "Let's call upon Tosmaster Melanie" to introduce the time report. Over to you, Tosmaster Melanie. So, we clearly state what will be the purpose that we call someone whom we mention in the conversation. And next, from all the sessions, someone also say, "How do you do?" Based on my research on the uh Oxford Dictionary, "How do you do?" is actually one of the informal greetings that we usually use on a daily basis. But in the context of the conversation, the speaker referred to a curiosity of one particular process. So, in order to do, in order to properly address this, it should have been better, "How did you do it? Hey man, how did you manage to do that?" So you know that, right? And someone say, "She has made me trying that new blah blah blah." Based on my research, I would like to remind everyone regarding this causative pattern. So, we should have, uh we should bear in mind regarding the pattern of subject plus have left or make plus the object and we should insert the base verb. So, the complete sentence for this should have been, "She has made me try," not trying, because we need the base verb due to this causative pattern. Okay, so next, someone said, "I have not my breakfast yet." There's one word missing in this sentence because we have the subject, we have the um the verb. Also, we have the object, but there's something missing in between about the process itself. So, it should have been, "I haven't had my breakfast yet." Or in another context, you could elaborate something that had been done in the past by saying, "I did not have breakfast at that time," for instance. Also, someone said, "I had a culture shock." Remember, culture is a noun. Shock is also a noun. So we need something that can explain the shock itself. So we need an adjective here. So uh it should have been, "I had a cultural shock," because we need an adjective to explain the shock itself. And also someone say, "My explanation is not clear, but the whole context was something that was done in the past." So it should have been, "My explanation was not clear." Remember, consistency is the key when we say something. And also someone said, "Something, something, something to point my finger on someone." So it's not completely um right or wrong because point something to someone, we need the correct preposition here because it's a phrase that cannot be distinguished. So it should have been, "To point my finger at someone." Because the speaker, the context of the conversation was to say that someone should be blamed. So it should have been, yeah, I should have pointed my finger at that person, something like that. And also, well, it's just a slick tongue for us as Indonesians. Um someone said that from this event or meetings, again, it's not parallel. And yeah, it should have been from this event or meeting, not with the S, okay? And as for the lexical resource, well, it's not completely incorrect. But you can use it for enhancing or adding some flavors to your dictionary. So first, let me start with, well, it's actually already correct. But you can also say firstly, "Allow me to blah blah blah." Or, "To begin with, I'm going to explain the objective of blah blah blah." You may also do the rest. And now as for the captive fading words, thank you so much for all the speakers. I could only notice three for today. And Tosmaster Tika said, "Maybe you are the next unicorn in life, so let us connect with each other." And I believe Tosmasters is one of the best platforms to connect with each other. Thank you, Tosmaster Tika. And second, Tosmaster Uyun say, "Your presence and patience are always a present for us." Thank you, Tosmaster Uyun. And lastly, from Tosmaster Yala, there is a reason why God creates us with two ears but only one mouth so that we could listen more than just talk. Such a good reminder. Thank you so much, Tosmaster Yala. So that is all from me. I give the control back to our GE, Tosmaster Alfin.
Wow, looks like we have a tough session here. Okay, fair insightful report for from Tosmaster Garla. Now, uh it's time to hear from uh our eh wood counter, Tosmaster Tami. Tosmaster Tami, the screen is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, GE Alfin. Am I audible?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So I would like to share my screen first. Okay. My screen is visible right now, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So, uh good morning, my fellow Tosmasters and guests. It feels like it's been a long time since I attend this meeting and this is my third time becoming AW Audi Controller. And I'm happy to be here tonight because I heard so many like great speeches tonight, great stories. But I would like to report to you as an AW Audi Controller for every speakers that already spoken today. And the first is for uh the report for the speaker. Thank you so much for sharing the great story uh for tonight and thank you for saying the WOD, the word of the day for tonight. Thank you so much. And this is the report for the speaker. Not so many filler words mentioned today. Well done. And for the evaluator, uh this is the, this is the report for uh your speeches tonight. And there's also not so many filler words mentioned. It's like less than five. And for the table topics speakers, thank you so much for your bravery for joining the table topic master. It's okay to mention so many filler words. Me myself also can't help to mention it. And uh it's okay, uh but here is your report. And the role ticker also, this is the report, uh so many mention for the filler words, but it's okay. Thank you so much for your um participation as a ticker. Yeah, that's all for my report and back to you, GE.
Thank you, Tosmaster Tami, for the detailed report about Ahwood. Now it's time for me to present you uh the general evaluation for this meeting. I will break it down first from before meeting. Uh the room is at time and guests are welcome upon arrival. Check. Where and guest inform about Tosmaster. Uh I note that guest Nanda get informed from Instagram. And then we go to the meeting opening. Uh the preceding official prepare and organize. Check. The misting start on on time. And seven PM o'clock. Check. Everyone properly introduce. Check. Tosmaster properly introduce. And I note that uh there is something sounds, uh it it looks like uh one or two mic is uh open up. So uh it uh interfere here the op- opening from the Tosmaster green that uh can turn off if there is a uh interfering sounds. And then uh for the Tosmaster, uh the Tosmaster fill all the roles. And Tosmaster introduce and explain the meeting's time. Tosmaster inter- introduce uh the GE. And Tosmaster properly introduce the uh topics master. And from me, the gen- general evaluator, uh I properly introduced the grammarian. Grammarian prepared and did they, they introduced within a lot of time. Grammarian properly introduced the word of the day. And one thing uh about uh word of the day, gallantry, it is for me, it is the unusual word. A new vocabulary and simply to say that it's very uh challenge, very uh encouraging. Because it means brave, uh one of the means is bravery. And then for topic master, uh the pu- was the purpose and timing of table topic properly explained? Yes. Then the topic selected appropriate and did find the meeting time? Yes. And did the topic master call on people who did not have a meeting role first during the table topic? Uh yes, I noted that uh I I fought for the table topic, but uh Tosmaster do uh Fika pick on uh what the one that not a role takers. And where guests invited to post participants, we have three. I repeat, three guests invited to this table topic. He is, she is Tosmaster Tessa, Tosmas- sorry, guest Tessa, guest Sabrina, and guest Sigid. I cannot wait to see you to join this on Tosmaster Club. And they so very gallant, uh a huge gallantry to to step up to the table topic. And was control properly return to the Tosmaster? Check. And that's uh the note for me and hope you enjoy this meeting. And back to you, Tosmaster of the meeting, Tosmaster Fika.
Okay, thank you, Tosmaster Alfin. What a great explanation for all the evaluators today. Okay, and I would like to close this meeting before that. So sorry. Is it visible?
Yes, visible.
Okay, so we have so many learning today that we got from all the speakers and from the double table topics speakers also and also from the evaluators. So many learning, but basically we can get that learning if we respect to all the speakers, we listen to them. This is what I love uh from one of the athlete of basketball. I'm not talking about uh football today, but this is the uh basketball. It's uh. On the closing remarks, I will say that uh this is my quotes today. I firmly believe that respect is a lot more important and a lot greater than popularity. It's really. Uh, what I love about uh talking about respects, okay? And also for the, all of you, especially for guests who want to join our event. You will have an experience of being speakers and whatever that Toastmaster told us. Today is a really true opinion about Toastmaster. You can contact Toastmaster Melanie, she's the VP of membership. See, you can contact directly to Toastmaster Melanie. Okay, so that's all from me, and thank you everyone for joining our event today. Okay. Bye everyone, see you on the next week.
You're already want to go back.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so, uh, it's not there. Okay, so apologies for that. So I would like to invite our bell counter. Toastmaster Lucky, I'm apologies for it.
Alright, thank you so much, our Mrs. It's okay, it's totally okay. So guys, are you ready for knowing who is, who is becoming on the Hall of Fame for tonight?
Yay.
Yay, Captain.
Aye aye.
Yay, I am.
Wait. Alright, I will share to you with a minute. So, the Hall of Fame for tonight. Goes to first best prepared speaker is. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Toastmaster.
Toastmaster Uyun.
Alright, are you ready for the, the best double topic speakers for tonight?
Ready. Yes.
Alright, the best double topic speakers for tonight goes to. Toastmaster Fika, our rock and roll guy tonight.
Mr. Keke.
Alright, congratulations for Toastmaster Fika. And the next, the best evaluator speakers goes to. Toastmaster Dantia. Congratulations, Toastmaster Dantia, and congratulations for all best speakers for tonight. I really enjoyed for tonight, so congratulations. I will give it back to the Tom.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Lucky. Sorry, I miss you. Okay, I'm missing your part. Okay, so uh that's. All and I would like to give the control back to our president, Toastmaster Garda.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Fika. And congratulations for you for playing your debut as the Toastmaster of the meeting, as well as our GE Toastmaster Alvin. Congratulations for both of you. And once again, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to ask for your participation to give your biggest applause for all. Rangers and all speakers, individual evaluators and double topic speakers. Congratulations to everyone. So I hope that by joining this meeting, you will have um a learning in your journey as an individual. So that you can apply this on yourself, be it in the workplace or in your studies. So before I adjourn this meeting, I would like to hear some euphemist voices from our guests. Can I hear some opinions from guest Sigid, who is now turning the camera on? Hello, Sigid.
Hi.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, so thank you so much for coming. Um, how do you find our, how did you find our meeting today?
Okay, um, actually, I cannot uh talk much about this one, because I'm really sorry, I'm late joining again. But what I felt fortunate is actually quite good, yeah. In terms of, uh, I'm surprisingly see. Uh, you know, a twofold lesson here. How this reminds back years ago about uh, yeah, our lessons in schools, but that's, that's great, that's great. Because basically, um, in our journey, we still have to be reminded again. About what we have learned. Um, this is yeah, just the way how the activity goes. And it does make us uh better from time to time. So, I feel today I have learned to, uh, twofold related and also that slight effect, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm surely after this, I will find a way how to do it, because this is quite interesting. And it's quite helpful, because actually, when we're doing online, we will try as much as possible to, to get attention from our audience, right? So, hand gestures, presentations, that's, that's really helpful for, for us.
Indeed. Yes, I also learned a lot from our members regarding the usage of the technology. Being a tax service. Like what Toastmaster Uyun said in her speech, that Toastmasters is actually a safe place for us to learn. Oh my goodness, my internet connection is unstable. I hope that everyone could hear me.
Yeah, no worries.
With this robotic movement and gesture. And thank you so much, um, sent to Toastmaster Sigid. Uh, we hope to see you again next week, okay? In the meantime, stay safe and be well. And also, lastly, um, can I hear from, who do we have here? Okay, can I have. Ufa? Hello, Ufa.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, um, is it possible for you to turn on your camera?
Uh, I don't think so.
Alright, it's, it's okay. So, thank you so much for coming and how did you find our meeting today?
Oh, wow. I think uh the people are great, uh, the topic are great and the vibes great. So actually, this is my first time, so I think I want to be part of it, but I don't know how.
Okay, so you want to be the part of it by all means, becoming a member? Yes.
Yes, kind of, but and uh I think it's a good place to grow, like uh Uyun said. That Toastmaster is a good place to make mistakes, so I think it's suit for me to practice my English more here.
Exactly. I a hundred percent agree with you and I second that. It is actually where you will not be judged for all of your mistakes.
Yes, that's what I like.
Yes, exactly. And it is also a safe place for everyone to grow and strive for progress, right? So, yes, Toastmaster Melanie, our vice president of membership, has shared her number in the chat box. So you can chat her, or you can text her, um, for any details that you need to know regarding this membership and Toastmasters, okay?
Alright, alright.
Thank you. Thank you so much, uh, sent to Toastmaster Ufa, and we hope to see you again next week, okay? Stay safe and be well, Ufa.
Okay.
Alright, that is all. And before I adjourn this meeting, for all visiting members, you may share your. Meeting details in the chat box so that everyone can also acknowledge your meetings. And before I adjourn this meeting, I would like to reinform for our members and S B T Toastmasters that. The recruitment of for and the registration for standing committee is still open, so please everyone, if you have any questions. Feel free to reach one of the executive committees so that we can address your concerns properly. And also, don't forget to renew your membership, because we are just, how many weeks? Less than two weeks in terms of, you know, renewing our membership term before it ends, okay? So make sure to secure your slot in this membership term in Toastmaster International. So that, so that you will still have access for improving yourself and excelling in this public speaking and leadership skills. And that is all from me, and now with the sound of this.
I gave one announcement before you close.
Okay, should I just hold this position?
Or you can give the announcement.
Okay, I put you on the spotlight. Please, Toastmaster Dantia.
Okay, so my fellow Toastmasters and guests, before we close the meeting, I just want to say that next week, we will have a decision from our own member. Toastmaster Andika, and it is um a good topics, because Toastmaster Andika here is the. Uh, agile, uh, how to say it? What is the title again? So he is a professional in agile leadership, and he will be talking about. Um, the, the skills to help us improve in the workplace, for example, and how this agile. Leadership help us in our life, basically. So, yeah, please do register to our next meeting. And it's the same seven to nine P M next week, twenty-four of September. We give the control back to you, Toastmaster Garda.
Right, thank you so much, Toastmaster Dantia. First of all, I would like to apologize, because yes, I received that file. But due to some technical glitch, I couldn't find it, and thank you so much for reminding me about that. So I was a bit confused when you said, or should I just deliver the announcement? I was thinking of which announcement, okay? Yeah, sometimes I'm being a dory, short-term memory loss. Okay. So, with that being said, with the sound of this glass and spoon, I hereby adjourn this meeting. That's the sound, and have a good weekend, everyone, and happy morning.
Have a good weekend.